I'd like to call the meeting to order for the City Council of Bellevue, March 6th, 2016. At this time, I would like to ask for the roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Cincella.
Here.
Alderman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony. Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert. I'm sorry. Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
As I think everyone knows by now, Alderman Seibert retired. He resigned to take a seat on the council board, actually several, maybe a week or two ago now. You should have all received the memo on it. Alderman Anthony should be back next meeting, but he's excused tonight. So that takes care of that. Roll call of department heads, please.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Port.
Here.
Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlyle. Jamie Matrit.
Here.
Tim Gregg Woods.
Here.
Sherry Faver.
Here.
Leander Spearmann.
Here.
Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer. Debbie Bellevue. Bob Sabal and Chuck is also retired. I need to update my list.
Jason Plon is here for Chuck. She is Randy Smith here. He's here for Royce. And Chief Parker's here for Chief Clay. Any other adjustments I missed? Okay, with that in mind, I'd ask everyone to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to our mother for which stands one nation, unburdened and invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we have no public hearing. I'm going to open public participation in just a moment before we get to the first action items. At this time, I just want to remind you, if we had any reason to evacuate this location because of smoke or fire, we'd ask you to take one of the exits. Be careful, go downstairs to the main floor. We would ask that you try to meet out in front of the auditorium, which is the big building directly out the store here, Catty Carter, around the front, just so that we could try to talk to everybody and see if the people sitting next to them came out okay. If we had storms for some reason, we would ask you to go to the basement of this building and get in the hallway, the inner hallways or the bathrooms where there are few or little windows at all in the basement of those locations. So thank you for listening to that. This time, I'm going to open public participation. When you raise your hand, I will call on you one at a time. You need to come to the middle of the room here at the microphone, state your name, keep your comments to about two to three minutes, and it should be city business. And with that said, I'll now open public participation. Anybody this evening? Yes, sir, in the front row.
Rick Brown, 632 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Bellevue, Illinois. Vince Lombari? Are you kidding me?
Mr. Brown.
You know, wait a minute. I think maybe you ought to see a doctor or something.
Fine, I'm honored.
You know, this is nuts. You know, you think you're the Vince Lombari Mayor. That's fabulous. I think you're a legend in your own mind.
Mr. Brown, do you have anything to say besides something personal? Your clock's ticking, you've got about a minute and a half to go.
I probably got about two and a half. Anyway, got a question for you, Mayor. Have you ever used any city credit card or accounts for personal use to make personal purchases, whether or not you paid the city back or not? Yes or no?
Mr. Brown, public participation is not question and answer. This is not 2020.
Well, you people have asked you questions and you've answered them throughout the years.
Mr. Brown.
Second question. Have you ever billed the city for any expense of any kind for reimbursement? Yes or no? Have you ever put gas in your personal vehicle using city money or charging privileges or credit cards? Yes or no? Have you ever used your city badge or position as Mayor to get discounts on any meals at anywhere or anywhere else in the city? Yes or no?
Mr. Brown, I believe you presented a FOIA to us today with many of these questions.
Yes, I did.
Give my staff in my office a chance to respond to them.
Okay.
At this time, I think we've got...
One last question. Has the city ever purchased flowers or anything else from Eckerd Forest? Yes or no? Grand Sandy.
Okay.
And he doesn't?
Mr. Brown, you're done. Anybody else this evening? Yes, sir, Mr. Port.
Hi, for those who don't know me, I'm Tom Ford, the fire chief. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. September is National Preparedness Month. For those of you who aren't aware, the city of Bellevue, as well as several of our adjoining communities, use Code Red. And what that does is it allows you to get emergency and non-emergency messages. We have the threat of severe weather tonight. Anybody here that's a resident or business owner can go home, get on the Internet on Bellevue.net, and click on the Code Red link and get signed up this evening even before storms come. If you don't have availability to Internet at your house, we're working on getting links on the library computers, as well as you can call my office so we can get you signed up anytime. It's just something I want to, we're trying to get the message out there. We have quite a few people signed up, but if you're at home sleeping tonight and tornado sirens go off, it's not going to say that you're going to hear it and wake up. The Code Red gives you a message on your phone, your email, however, whatever devices you have with you all the time to get that emergency message to you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Who's next? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Michael Hagberg. I was a little surprised to see an appointment on tonight's agenda, mostly that it was so quick. I am in favor of Mr. Gah being appointed to that, but I'm wondering why the city doesn't follow their own ordinance. Here's an ordinance that's written not for the average citizen, but for the city themselves to follow, which is in the new code 31-0.56, stating that you have to be given a 10-day notice of who is going to be appointed before they're actually appointed and sat and started to vote on something. And I'm just saying, these are ordinances, we might as well follow the law. The law was written, or else, if we don't want to, let's just delete that out of the code book, and that way no future council has to abide by it either. Thank you.
Back to the room.
I hear the pier hall hits another snag with a plumbing problem, and also heard that that whole development is basically supposedly being run by the Catholic Church. Now, I don't know if that's true or not. And when ever Bellevue deals with the Catholic Church, they always come out sucking pests. And when is Lindenwood, the police chief, our authority's here today, when is Lindenwood going to get sprinklers in these small houses? Or are they going to wait till somebody gets burned up or something? It seems the police have trouble policing around grade schools for drug dealers. I think we ought to avoid Lindenwood's $150,000 per year, as everybody seems to think. They've got money running out their ears. So I think they can, by this time, they can get by without the $150,000 a year that the taxpayers at Bellevue pay them, and we can buy more police cars and more police. And the police don't have to spend so much time policing speeders that West Main by Lindenwood. The police could spend some time at 29th and Godfrey, which is a school zone, and stopping people who don't even pay enough for this 29th and Godfrey stop sign. And Dom, not Dom, but Chill last week, when he was lecturing, a member of the administration talked for a solid five minutes, and it wasn't, I don't even think it was pertinent to them. You know, that could have been talked about at another function or whatever. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Pollak. I live at 302 West Cleveland Avenue, and I'm on the agenda this evening. I've got an appointment to the Human Relations Commission. So I figured that gives me up to three minutes to just talk about myself. So am I done? Yeah. In all seriousness, though, I wanted to just take a brief minute to say that I'm honored to be up for appointment for this commission. I think this is one of those commissions that we're really fortunate to have that's created here in Bellevue, and this is one of those times where we're really moving forward and a lot can be done through this commission, through the Human Relations Commission. When I served on the advisory committee for the comprehensive plan for Bellevue, I had the pleasure to work with the late Mary Hughes and Bellevue's current Citizen of the Year, Gloria Crowder. And I know what some real positive energy can do in terms of getting people together. And I think it's even all the more crucial when we have, you know, Mr. Bittner, all due respect, but I spoke here before with regards to signing that you have to speak to after the students, and that's a prime example to me of a lack of public relations, given the symbiotic nature that community is to economic development. So if we want Bellevue to be strong, then we need to let our residents know that they are all welcome and that we work together with them. Okay? So I ask the council to truly consider my appointment to the commission. Thank you.
No, this is not question and answer. You have your chance at the end of the meeting.
Oh, I'll answer a question.
No, no, I'm not, no, we're not doing that. We're not getting into question and answer. This is public participation. You can state what's on your mind.
My apologies.
Okay, ma'am.
I would just like to give Andy Gah a somewhat warmer welcome to his position here. I've known Andy since he was a young boy. I was his PSR teacher at St. Mary's. He is honest, hardworking, fair, and I know Andy will do a good job and reach across the table. Thank you. Welcome, Andy.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation, and we're going to move on to the next portion of the meeting, presentations, recognitions, and appointments. The first order of business, I am recommending the appointment of Andrew N. Gah, 605 Fulton Street, which is to serve as Ward 6 Alderman to fill the vacancy. Andy will assume the same vacated committee assignments as Mr. Seibert held till the end of this term, end of this fiscal year, and then everything will be evaluated by someone. So at this time, I would ask if there is, first of all, a motion. Motion to approve. Hold on, I want to address that. Okay, let's go ahead. Let, Mr. Horner would like to address the question about the procedure.
I wanted to take an opportunity to address a procedural matter that was raised during public participation. Coincidentally, Alderman White and I had discussed that very issue prior to the meeting. And just wanted to clarify that it doesn't appear, based upon the ordinances, in particular Section 31.055, that talks about appointment of officers under the mayor's section, that this would apply to this type of appointment because it expressly states that it applies to appointments of, quote, "city officers whose election or appointment is not otherwise provided for by law." And then it goes on to talk about temporary appointments. It talks about the timing of the notice, rejection of the appointments, and actually even remuneration of officers. So this section that we're discussing of the ordinance would suggest that that applies to appointments that are not otherwise provided for by the statute, because there is a statute in this case, Section 3.1-10-50, that contemplates the mayor's appointment being forwarded to the corporate authorities, and the corporate authorities acting upon the appointment within 30 days. So it has an outer limit, but not an inner limit. But addressing this previously, I believe with the appointment of Alderman Bruce, prior to the appointment before that, that I recall, how we handled it was, to the extent that people would consider that window to be applicable, this city council has had a disentertained and approved motion to waive that requirement to the extent that you would consider it to be applicable. But again, if it were, even if it were applicable, what would happen under the ordinances then is you would have a temporary appointment until such time as a permanent appointment is made. What you've done in the past is add that motion to waive it to the extent that it's applicable to make the appointment, point it at the outset. So I believe that Alderman White was, had a motion to that extent.
Alderman White, I'll call him then.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make the motion to waive the 10-day notification that is directed by your ordinances. I'll pay you correct for what it is.
Okay, so the first motion would be a motion to waive the 10-day...
10-day notification.
Right. And we have a second. A second by Alderman Hazel. Do I hear discussion on that? Roll call. Yes, sir.
And we are having a correction. Do we need to correct this?
It could be clarified if that's, if people are reading it two different ways, it wouldn't hurt to clarify. The statute does control, and the statute sets out a very specific mechanism by which you...
Should we put that on the next ordinance? Will they be able to try and hold on?
I'd agree.
Right away.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony. Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Motion carries. Andy, you want to come forward? And we have Judge Heinz Rudolph here, present, to administer the oath. If you two want to come center stage right there. And I appreciate Judge Rudolph, who's here tonight. You want to use this?
No, I'm sorry. Wait, which one? Then afterwards, we'll change the sign.
Oh, he's going to do it to the microphone right there, and that'd be right there. Close and personal.
Aye.
Aye.
Andrew N. Gah.
Andrew N. Gah.
Having been appointed to the office of Alderman, Ward 6.
Having been appointed to the office of Alderman, Ward 6.
In the city of Bellevue.
In the city of Bellevue.
In the county of St. Clair.
In the county of St. Clair.
Before said.
Before said.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman, Ward 6.
Of the office of Alderman, Ward 6.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
This is something I've always wanted to do, be an Alderman. I was thinking maybe a little bit later down the road. I have two young kids, but I really, really love the city of Bellevue, and it's a very exciting time to be part of the city council, and I look forward to working with every one of you, and also representing the residents of Ward 6. So thank you.
You've got to sign this first, Andy, before you can vote. This worked out very well. Judge Rudolph's teaching a class here at Dillman with tonight, so, very good. Thanks again.
Anytime.
Good night. The next order of business, as he's getting settled, with, you heard me say in the appointment that he will assume Mr. Seibert's committees that'll go until the end of April 30th of this fiscal year. But I didn't think it was fair to throw him in for the next two months as the chairman of a committee, so I've asked Roger Wiggington to serve for two months as the chairman of Streets and Grades through April 30th. So I hear a motion. A motion by Alderman Dillman. Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Dillman. I think he raised his hand, did you?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve Alderman Wiggington to assume those duties for two months. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I do want to recognize, I don't think, we don't have anyone here from Basic this evening, do we? Miscommunication there. The character word of the month is perseverance, staying with the task and not giving up. And I think many of you in this group know that word and live by it very much. At this time, we have two appointments, recommendations I have for a Human Relations Commission. Is there a problem if we do them together, or is that an issue?
Together.
I'd ask for a motion to consider my appointment of Ashley Pollak to serve a three-year terms on the Human Relations Commission, and to also appoint Dennis DeWorczak to serve a three-year term on Human Relations Commission. Do you hear a motion? Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Galetti. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Motion carries. At this time, I do want to recognize, I don't think, we don't have anyone here from Basic this evening, do we? Miscommunication there. The character word of the month is perseverance, staying with the task and not giving up. And I think many of you in this group know that word and live by it very much. At this time, we have two appointments, recommendations I have for a Human Relations Commission. Is there a problem if we do them together, or is that an issue?
Together.
I'd ask for a motion to consider my appointment of Ashley Pollak to serve a three-year terms on the Human Relations Commission, and to also appoint Dennis DeWorczak to serve a three-year term on the Human Relations Commission. Do you hear a motion? Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Galetti. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Motion carries. Or reports, we go to the zoning board.
Yes, sir. 11-81, case 3, January 17, Adam Jokic, and his SCC event center. Request for assigned variance to permit increased height and maximum area allowed for free stenographic at 1550 East State Route 15, parcel number 13-01.0-400-028, located in the C4 commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code 155.028, 155.029, and 155.093 in Ward 6.
Yes, sir. Alderman White. Make a motion to approve and have the proper ordinance drawn. Motion by Alderman White, second by Alderman Gah. Do I hear a discussion on that? All in favor? Yes, sir.
Is the discussion going to include the stipulation? I mean, is the motion going to include the stipulation?
Anissa, was that included in that motion, Andy, no?
Well, that was the recommendation that they would need to...
They would need, you need to confirm that. So you're saying you want to include the stipulation, right?
I'm not necessarily saying I want to include the stipulation. I was inquiring whether or not the stipulation is included.
It says here with the following stipulation, "No graphic signs should be used for display of messages or advertising of a business or events not associated with the site." Is that the stipulation that's on there, Anissa?
Because they're...
It's a legal requirement.
Yeah. The distinction is relevant because otherwise it would be considered a billboard that's seen on the wall.
Right.
Okay, so we're including the stipulation.
Okay, Mr. Jokis, you're here. I thought I saw you. Do you understand that? Okay. So we have a motion and a second to have the proper ordinance drawn and approve this recommendation coming from zoning, right? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
11-82, case 4, February 17, Breton Stephanie Frank-Houser, request for use variance to allow the operation of both the service and retail business as a home occupation at 1915 North Bellevue, parcel number 08-23.0-303-166, located in the C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code 162.394162.2471162.570, Ward 7.
We have a motion by Alderman Galetti, no, here, second, second by Alderman Elmore, to have this approved and have the proper ordinance drawn. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
11-83, case 5, February 17, Todd Kennedy, Main Street Brewing Company, request for special use permit for a local license at 6435 West Main Street, parcel number 07-12.0-213-026, located in the C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code 162.248, Ward 4.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second. Second by Raffi Ovian, to approve this and have the proper ordinance drawn for Main Street Brewing Company. Any discussion? All in favor, yes, sir.
This is in name of applicant only, is it not?
It is in name applicant only, right, Anissa?
Yes, sir, per our recommendation.
Per our recommendation, yes. So we ask this to be approved. No, if there's no further discussion, all in favor to approve this recommendation with that stipulation and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
11-84, case 6, February 17, Forks and Sticks Incorporated, request for special use
11-82, Case 4, February 17, Bretton Stephanie Frankhauser, request for use variance to allow the operation of both the service and retail business as a home occupation at 1915 North Belt East, parcel number 08-23.0-303-166, located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code 162.394162.2471162.570 Ward 7.
We have a motion by Alderman Gilletti, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Elmore, to have this approved and have the proper ordinance drawn. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
11-83, Case 5, February 17, Todd Kennedy, Main Street Brewing Company, request for special use permit for a local license at 6435 West Main Street, parcel number 07-12.0-213-026, located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code 162.248 Ward 4.
What's up, Alderman? Motion by Alderman Wigginton, second. Second by Raffi Ovian, to approve this and have the proper ordinance drawn for Main Street Brewing Company. Any discussion? All in favor of, yes, sir?
This is in name of applicant only, is it not?
It is in name of applicant only, right, Anissa?
Yes, sir, per our recommendation.
Per our recommendation, yes. So we ask this to be approved, no, if there's no further discussion, all in favor to approve this recommendation with that stipulation, and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
11-84, Case 6, February 17, Forks and Sticks Incorporated, request for special use permit for a local license for seven restaurant at Seven South By, and Chee Chee Restaurant at 28 East Main Street, parcel number 08-21.0-445-023021, located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code 162.248 Ward 6.
Yes, sir.
Recommend approval with the stipulation that was in the name of the applicant only.
Motion by Alderman White. Second by Alderman Hazel. Discussion. All in favor of this motion to have this adopted with the name of the applicant only, and to have it, have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
11-85, Case 7, February 17, Larry Thomas, request for use variance in order to operate a party bus rental service at 1913 North Belt East, parcel number 08-23.0-303-165, located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code 162.247 and 162.570 Ward 7.
Motion by Gilletti, second by Elmore, to approve this and have the proper ordinance drawn. Discussion? All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
11-86, Case 8, February 17, Yvette Dominguez, request for special use permit for used motor vehicle sales at 3795 East State Route 15, parcel number 08-19.0-400-019, located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code 162.248 in Ward 8.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Also, it's been recommended that if you put under the, the corporate name, the business name here in the city of Belleville, Cardinal, not Patriot.
Okay.
Patriots out of Colorado, and they're now located in Belleville.
So it will be called Cardinal, and we want to get it in the name of the corporate name here. So everybody understand that? Not in the name of the applicant, that was the individual who filled out the application, it's in the name Cardinal. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second to approve this zoning board recommendation and have the proper ordinance drawn. All in favor? Question?
We have a motion.
We have a motion by Alderman Wigginton, I need a second. You made a motion, right? Did you make the motion?
No, I didn't, actually. I just brought up.
Okay, so are you willing to make a motion with that?
I made a motion, yes, exactly.
Motion with that included, and second by Alderman Musgrove, in changing, making sure it verifies on the ordinance that says Cardinal.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Harder, okay with that? Yes, we'll get that changed. Okay, we have a motion, second. Alderman Tyler.
This is the former wanker, I'll receive, correct?
Yes, former wanker.
Is this going to be only a used motor vehicle?
No.
Okay.
But it's the used part that needs the zoning variance, right, Anissa?
Right.
The, the new does not.
Exactly.
So we're here to, well, it's, it's going to be new and used cars, and they've got quite a bit of car experience, this group, so it's, that'd be a good thing. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of have this motion approved by this recommendation by the zoning board, the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We go on to the last one. Go on, that was the last one there. This time, we go to economic development. Alderman Kinsella.
I make a motion to approve an amended development agreement with Dom and Shell Incorporated for the remodeling and expansion of The Edge, located at 7011 South Belt West. The purpose of the amendment is to extend the project completion date.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Diddleman. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gilletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Kinsella, do you have a health and housing?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve to amend the brass and yard maintenance agreement with Minton Outdoor Services Incorporated.
We have a motion by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Tyler, do I hear discussion?
I, Mayor, I would like to mention that basically what we're doing is changing from mowing city properties three times, I'm sorry, every two weeks to every three weeks. That will save us approximately $10,000.
And that's primarily in, big, the big plots of the.
Yes.
Right. And Alderman Randall?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to have to abstain as I did when we originally approved this contract with the vendor because I've got family working for them.
Very good, very good. Yes, sir.
There's an exception on here, and that's Rob Nora Parkins. Since it's in receivership, they're going to go ahead and still be, have their rest cut every two weeks. We agreed with having that done.
Okay, and that was included with this?
Sigh.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second on the health and housing recommendation. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
White.